Welcome to St. Augustine this evening, The Mike Davis Show. We've got a very special guest for you, one of our candidates for county commission. We'll be introducing him in just a minute, but before we do that and have all kinds of other fun, and Amanda's here with us as well, we've got to make some money. So we're going to, we're going to do a few reads, make a little bit of money for the show, and then we will get to work. Solomon Services, the premier place for personal training in St. Augustine. They offer both youth and adult training classes. They have small group strength and fitness development classes, athletic development for both team and individual sports performance. If you're injured and you need to get back on the field or the court, they can help you do so. You'll be stronger and in better shape when you do. They have a state of the art center with both indoor and outdoor turf areas, and all of their coaches are certified through the National Strength and Conditioning Association. Call them and make an appointment today, 904-461-9945, or visit their website, solomonservices.com and sign up today. You need to do that, you're 31 days into your promise to get into better shape. And if you haven't done it, this is a place where you can. And they're great at helping you do that. You're on a deadline, let's go people!
All right, Bozard Ford Lincoln in St. Augustine. Their goal is to make sure your time and experience buying a car is stress-free, fun, and enjoyable. Bozard is a family-owned Ford dealership that has been in business since 1949. Bozard Ford has been the recipient of numerous dealer awards, including being ranked number one automotive dealership in the nation by Dealer Rater. Bozard Ford also has won back-to-back President's Awards, which is the highest honor given by a Ford Motor Company. Check them out today online, bozardford.com, or head down and have dinner at Ford's Garage. I hear the Jiffy Burger is delicious. A to Z Roofing and Waterproofing, they offer free estimates and have been serving St. John's County for over 20 years in the construction industry. A to Z offers painted metal roofs for Saltwater area homes with warranties for up to 25 years. They also offer shingle roofs with warranties for up to 50 years. They install tile roofing, cedar shake shingles, designer roofing, and flat roof coverings. Recent job photos with material descriptions can be seen at A to Z Roofing and Waterproofing.com. Call Chuck Mccone and his team for all your roofing needs.
All right, and now it is, it's, we're going to get to work. So we have a St. John's County candidate for commission, District Three, Royal Lamo, who is currently sitting in District Three. And how did you get to District Three to represent us?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mike, for having me. I really appreciate the opportunity to come on and speak. Just a little over a year ago, I was appointed by Governor DeSantis to, to fill the position. And it's been an interesting year, but I've really enjoyed it, got to learn a lot. The staff has been wonderful, and we got a lot of challenges, but it's been a, it's been a great, great learning opportunity.
And you knew Governor DeSantis from when he was a congressman?
That is correct. I was his district representative for the first year. We had our office here, our district office was in this building. And I learned a lot from, from Governor DeSantis, and it was, it was a great opportunity. You know, I've worked in both the, I've worked at the state government for the Florida Legislature. I've worked at the, the local level, at the county level, in county government, and then for him in the, in the federal government. So, learned a lot, gained a lot of experience, and here we are.
But that's not all you've done. So you've got a pretty diverse background. So you also have a business interest that you have been involved in for some time?
That is correct, that is correct. So I have a good balance of both the public and private sector. Currently, I own a, a business, a full-service commercial cleaning business. I also do some property management and have some rental properties. So I stay busy, for sure. But having that experience, I think, on both sides gives me, you know, a really good understanding. I think being a, a small business owner is probably one of the toughest jobs, toughest things you can do is being a small business owner. And you really, you know, having employees and seeing how things impact them, it's, it's really great experience.
And you've kind of been around the political process for a long time.
Very active. I started in the Young Republicans years ago, was one of the founding members and the president of that, went on to chair the Republican Party. But, you know, if you look at my background, I've just had a passion for public service here in St. John's County. You were my, you were my sponsor into the St. Augustine Rotary, and I served in, I was president of the Ancient City Lions Club for a couple of years. I was a member, been a member of the Knights of Columbus since 2008. Just, you know, was on the St. Gerard Campus Board of Directors for a few years. So, just very passionate about this county that I, you know, was born and raised in, and where I'm raising my family, so.
And you went to school here in St. John's County?
I did. I was, I grew up in the southern part of the, of the county and attended all my schooling here. I had a great second grade teacher in Ms. Darcy Davis, your wife.
She's an amazing teacher. I'm not an amazing podcaster, Amanda is, but Darcy's an amazing teacher.
She is, she was great. She did a great job.
And then you went to Pedro?
No, so I went to, I graduated St. Augustine High School, class of 2001. I can't believe I just said that, 2001, it's time has just really flown by, but no, Pedro Menendez was-
It gets worse. As the oldest one here, it gets worse. Bobby, tell them it gets worse, because you're slightly older than me. Like, maybe a couple hours.
Yeah, so, you know, Pedro had opened my senior year of high school. So they gave us the option, and I chose to stay as a Yellow Jacket, like I think most of the students, because we'd already spent our, you know, our first three years at St. Augustine High, and so.
Kind of, that'd be rough if you, you know, you ripped a kid out of the school. You've spent three years there and you're like, you gotta go to another school. I, I'm glad the school district gave you the ability to do that.
Yeah, it was, it was great. You know, like I said, I'd, I'd been there for the, for, for three years and wanted to graduate from that school. I'd already found my way around, didn't want to start at a new school, so.
You gotta break in a whole new set of teachers.
Right.
I'm just, Pete was busy doing that.
Well, at that point, you've already ordered your class ring. Like, are you gonna buy another class ring? I don't think so.
You got your jackets, you got your gear, you got your hats, you got your seat in the stadium, you've been going to games for years. You don't want to go change.
Everything's color-coded.
Plus, the Yellow Jackets were just a great football team back then.
They were, they were really good. Joey Wiles did a great job with that program there, and I was, I've always been really interested, you know, in sports, and we had a great, great program there. It was, it was a good time. But, yeah, yeah, so it's a little bit about my background.
And what have you learned in the year that you've been on the commission? What's, what are the most eye-opening things, you know, "I just didn't realize that," or, you know, "I thought this would be this way, but not quite exactly to this extent." So what's the biggest kind of learning experience you've had?
Well, I'll say that, for me, one of the things that I've really enjoyed is getting to work with our staff, very professional. These are folks that I think really go out of their way to serve the residents of this county. They're always professional, they've helped me out tremendously. I would say some of the things that, you know, have really kind of, you know, surprised me is, I think we're, you know, we're in a different political environment, I would say, you know, times have certainly changed since even when I was involved. And there was a little bit more civility and a little bit more decorum back then. And so, you know, our county has grown so much, and I think just, you know, helping folks, you know, understand why we're doing the things that we're doing, and why things are being done the way that they are. You know, I think a lot of times, you know, when I first got appointed, I think I was in there for a couple of weeks, and, you know, someone was like, you know, "Wow, you guys have really just overgrown this county." And I'm like, well, you know, I, I just got in, in the, the position.
In the last 20 days?
Really, you know, I just got in there. And look, I know it comes with the job, but just making folks understand, you know, a lot of this development that they're seeing, you know, is, is from years past. I mean, some of this development, you know, has been probably, what, on the books for, what, 10, 15 years it was approved?
It's been on there a long time, and you, you had a, a couple of things kind of hit in 2020 with COVID, with St. John's County being the number one school district, the great access we have to recreational areas here. We didn't have a huge population in St. John's County, it's very attractive to a lot of people, and a lot of people flocked here, because you look at the amount of building permits that were issued during that time period, is, is the highest number in the history of the county in a year. I think it was 21 might have been the high, it went down a little bit in '22 and '23, but it's still a, a pretty good clip that we're building. And, so yeah, the growth we've had the last years has been, been a pretty good growth, but it wasn't like you, they said in, in January of 20, "Well, let's just start this development process." If you've ever been, and I'm on the construction side, we don't do large developments, I don't do large housing projects, but if you go permit anything, it, it's not instantaneous. We don't walk in there and staff go, "Oh, great, we don't need to look at anything, let's just stamp it approved." That's not how it works, and it takes a long time to get those things approved. So in some case, a lot of that stuff was sitting there waiting for a boom like that to take advantage of it.
Right. I think some folks, you know, it's, could be under the impression that, you know, something gets approved, and then they go out there with the shovels the next day, you know? But there's, you're, like you said, there's, there's a lot to the, to the process.
Well, there's a lot to the process, and if, if you're new to here, you didn't see the downturn that we had in 2008, '09, '10, and '11, where you could probably add a couple of those years together to get, to get, you probably had two-plus years together to get to a normal building permit year, and we had those for multiple years in a row, where you just didn't have a lot of growth. So you had a lot of those units that were already out there and, and approved, they sat for a long time, before somebody could say, "Now we have enough demand to be able to fill those." So yeah, I don't, when you, when you look at that, and the other is, you know, I'm somebody who likes the county to be smaller, but I recognize people can move around this country anywhere they want to go. And when you say, "Well, we don't want you here," well, when did you get here? Right, I had a really good friend on a board back in the early 90s, and she told me, you know, she had been in town about five or six years, and she said, "It's just too crowded. There's too many people. When, when, you've been here your whole life, when did it get too crowded for you?" And I said, "Well, no offense, but the day after you and your husband moved here." Right, I love you, but the day you guys moved here was over for me. And she laughed, and she said, "I get it." You know, there's a lot of great people that have moved here, we welcome them here, but you know, you gotta kind of meld that old and that new, and you gotta understand that things are going to change when you move to someplace new. You brought the growth with you, so.
Right, yeah, you know, it's, being born and raised here, Mike, you know, I, I understand why folks are frustrated, you know, especially the traffic, which has been horrific that we're working on, but, you know, you're, you're right. We live in the, one of the greatest counties and one of the greatest, you know, state in the country, so we've had people that, that want to be here, and I get it.
So, yeah, we're not Newark. We're not a Midwestern town that lost all of its factories. There's a whole lot worse places to be, so some of that, you have to understand, when you have a, a high-growth area, you're gonna, it's gonna take a while for some of those things to catch up. Stopping growth isn't necessarily the answer to catching it up. The answer is everybody being patient as things kind of work their way through the system. And no offense, some of the roads are county roads, and they take a while to get funded. DOT is, there's projects that have been on the books for DOT here in St. John's County since, you know, I moved back. It took 20-some years to get the new bridge of Lions built, right? One, one group fought against it in the early 80s, and it took 20 years to get that back on track. DOT just said, "We're gonna back away," and it took 20 years to do it. So, yeah, it takes a little while to get some of those things done and caught up. And then some of the times when they, when they happen, and we talked about this on the, on the podcast weeks and weeks ago, one of the most overdue projects is, is replacing the King Street Bridge over the Sebastian River. Well, when DOT does that this year, starting in May, it is going to logjam the city of St. Augustine. If you live in the northern part of the county, you won't notice that, but if you have to get in and out of the city of St. Augustine, you're gonna notice that every single day.
Yeah.
Now, and, and I look at the growth and, and, you know, the roads that have been built in the northern part of the county in the last 20 years, I drive up there every one, and I'm like, "When, when did they build this road?"
You almost don't even recognize it.
When did they build that road?
Right, right.
Like, yeah, you used to not be able to get from here, you know, from point A to point B, and now there's four different ways to get there, so it is catching up. I mean, and, and, yeah, there's always somebody-
And we have over, you know, 600 million right now in infrastructure projects going on. State Road 16 is our number one priority. One of my strengths, I feel like, is my relationship with our, our Florida Legislature, and we need to continue to, you know, be advocating for the, for, for more, you know, traffic improvements and funding. So, you know, my position with growth is, you know, I'm, I'm for smart controlled growth. You know, I believe that, you know, when projects come before me, I judge each project based on its merit, making sure it's compatible, do we have the infrastructure, and what is the developer doing to kind of, you know, be a benefit to the surrounding area? Are they putting in the, the traffic signal? Are they putting in the turn lane? Are they? And a big thing for me is, and this kind of leads into, you know, you know, when people come to me and they want to discuss their projects, and, you know, one of the things I always say is, is that I want them to meet with the community. I want them to do, have the meetings, you know, so people aren't blindsided, and kind of get some community feedback. It's very important to me that they're working with folks and letting them know what their vision is and what they're looking to do.
And I think that's one of the most important things. I sit on the, the City of St. Augustine Planning and Zoning Board, and, and when people have come in and spent time on a development talking to the community, it makes a huge difference.
It does, it really does.
We, we had a very contentious item on Florida Avenue. Eventually, it became a park, which was the best thing for the neighborhood, but it was one of those parcels that you couldn't stop the growth on it. There was no way you could take the owner's rights away to develop that. It was zoned for development, so, you know, it's, but at the same time, you also saw the stress that it was going to put on that neighborhood, and you're like, "How do you, it was really difficult to balance it too." Park was the best thing that could have happened, and that is what happened. And that's, so that was, we were really lucky in that sense.
So I have just a couple of questions. You mentioned 16 as a big priority for you. The intersection around the 95 on and off ramps is a nightmare, and I have to drive it all the time. When is that gonna be finished? Because it's such a mess.
You know, we're, we're continuing to, to follow up on that. I don't have a, an exact timeline for you, but, you know, we hear, I mean, you know, between the Buc-E's and the Costco, and now they're looking at the Bass Pro Shop and Home Depot. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a big concern, so, but we, we continue to move forward with that, you know, so.
Oh, okay, so back to me. So you're, if you graduated in 2001, you're just a tad younger than me. You're pretty young for people in, in government in St. John's County. How do you feel about that? Are they, are they treating you good? Are they treating you like the young buck?
You know, really, I've, and I've kind of felt this way for the last few years. I really think it's time for, you know, my generation to step up to the plate and be a part of the solution. So, yeah, you know, it's, it's, I turned 41 on, on Saturday, and so I do get, a lot of times, people say, "Well, you look really young to be, to be doing this." But, like I said, you know, earlier, I've, I've just always had a passion for, for public service, and, you know, I, I continue to work hard and-
I'm gonna speak for Bobby and I as the older generation on this show, and we want you guys to be wildly successful, so you can pay for our retirement. So keep going, don't slow down, do a good job.
Great, I'm so excited!
Yes, we're so excited for you guys. So what, where is District Three? What, what's the boundaries of District Three?
So District Three is the southeastern portion of our county. So you've got, you know, it actually goes up to part of 16, Royal St. Augustine, and then goes down. You've got the St. Augustine Shores, you've got St. Augustine South, and then you've even got some of the, the beach area, Marsh Creek and down, and it goes down into Crescent Beach and Butler Park. So it's a big, it's a big landmass district, where it's not one of the more highly populated, like in the northern part, Joining Creek, and then District Four, which is Ponte Vedra and Nockaty in that area. But, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of land to cover there.
And if you're new here, you may not know that it's a county-wide vote, even though you guys supposedly represent a district. You really represent everybody in the county, but you're representing that district specifically, but it's a county-wide vote, so you gotta campaign all over the county.
That's right, and the other thing is, you know, when items are coming before you, you're voting on those as well, you know? So, I mean, it doesn't matter what district is, you know, it's in, we're voting on all of these different issues in each district. So I'm up in Ponte Vedra, I'm up in Joining Creek, I'm down in Crescent Beach, I'm over in Hastings, World Golf Village, 210. It's a lot of ground to, to cover.
How many nights a week are you at different meetings and gatherings?
Oh, every night, every night, you know? That's, I think, a misconception, and, and, you know, that this may be a part-time job, and, you know, I think some people think, you know, maybe, you know, it's, you're out doing these ribbon cuttings and going to these galas, and it's, it's, it's so much more than that. I mean, 80% of this job is, you know, folks reaching out to you that have, have an issue, or, you know, they want to talk to you about, you know, Shore Drive, the trail we're looking to put in there, they want to talk about boat ramps. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a full-time, for me, 60-plus hour a week job. And you're meeting with a lot of different people, preparing for your agenda and your county, you know, the county, preparing for the county meetings, but you're also, you know, dealing with a wide range of constituent services and needs. So it's a, it's a bit.
Well, and I think it was probably a part-time job in the 60s and 70s, you know, when the county population was less than 100,000. I came back home from college in '88, and the county population was probably around 70,000 or 80,000.
Right.
And so I think then it probably, well, you just had fewer people, you had fewer issues, things were more spread out. But I think after the, the 80s, the 90s on, is a full-time job. The county was in a full-growth mode at that point in time, and it just, I think at that point, you couldn't say, "Well, I'm just gonna go be a commissioner and spend 20 hours a week doing it." I don't think that worked anymore. And now, definitely with, we have 300,000 people-
Over 300,000 people in the county, yeah. So it's definitely full-time, the, the phone never stops ringing, the emails never stop coming. And, you know, one of the things I try to do is, you know, I think the most important part of my job is being a voice for the people that I represent. So I am always going to the HOA meetings, I'm always having constituent gatherings to hear their concerns. One of the big items that I have in, in my district is Shore Drive. I don't know if you're familiar with that, the trail, and it's been a highly contentious item.
So the, the last that I heard of this was a mischievous Parks employee named Troy Blevins was trying to steal all the land and turn it into Blevins Trail. All of that's not true. The county was trying to do a trail around the outside on Shore Drive.
Correct.
I'm assuming that is still what you're trying to do, but it involves a lot of homeowners along the way.
It does, it involves a lot of homeowners. I've met with both sides on this. Again, remember, this is, this is kind of before my time, before I had even gotten on the board. But I've met with the residents, they, they had a trolley for me. And they took me on a trolley and showed me, showed me around, showed me some of their, you might know Dr. Circe?
Yeah.
He was my, he was my tour guide on the trolley, and-
Great guy, great, longtime St. Augustine.
Great, great guy. And he kind of showed me around, and, you know, they, they addressed all of their, you know, some of their concerns that they had with this, and, but, you know, it's interesting on an issue like this, there's a lot of different, you know, it's kind of split, really. And it, you know, a lot of it, it comes down to public safety. You know, people walking along that trail, riding their bikes, pushing strollers, you know? So I just, I tell folks, you know, "Listen, I, you know, I want to hear your concerns, I want to be your voice, and how can we, how can we work together? What can we do to kind of, you know, work together on this project?"
Well, my dad and one of our painting subs, Elijah Baker, were bike riders, and one night, they talked me into going with them. And they would ride that Shore Drive trail, it was a beautiful ride. Getting there from downtown US-1, 5:00 in the afternoon, I looked at them, I said, "I will never ride that again with you, ever. I will meet you there, and I will ride inside the Shore Drive, I'll do that, but you are never getting me anywhere near US-1 again on a bicycle." That was the craziest thing I ever did. And that was in the 1990s.
Yeah.
Like, no, no thank you.
We were trying to look for a way to get in and out of downtown for fireworks, and we had two kids. So we had a toddler and we had a baby, and that's the sole reason why we bought a bike trailer. So we lived in West King area at the time, and so we trailered, and my mom was still able to ride a bike at that point. And so my husband, the kids in the trailer, my, my mom and myself, we all rode bikes down to the, to the shrine for Fourth of July lights. US-1 is very scary on a bicycle. I wouldn't recommend it, it's not my favorite.
No, I, it's not a, it was not good, it's not good. Budget, you guys just finished a budget, so you started the process again. What's the total budget for the county right now?
So the, the budget was 1.6 billion.
That's, that just boggles my mind, but wow.
It's a, yeah, we've grown so much, and, yeah, so we're gonna start that process. We've got a few things going on right now, we have to do the comp plan, we're working on a strategic plan. But yeah, we'll be meeting, I'll be meeting with our budget officer, Jesse Dunn, and starting to discuss the, the budget coming up here, so.
Jesse's been there a while.
He has, he is a, has been a wealth of, he's a wealth of knowledge, and he's helped me out quite a bit.
And so, budget goes up next year. I'm assuming the ad valorem taxes will continue to, to roll in. You know, one of the things that people always talk about, even if you keep the rates the same, the assessments go up, so your, your overall taxes go up. If you're locked in as a, as a resident, you kind of get an advantage there. Business taxes have gone up quite a bit in the last few years. As somebody who has business property, it, you go, "Wow, that's a nice change." I'm saying that nicely. There's other guys that call me and bend my ear about it, but any chance of any rollback with the revenues rate, or is there just too much need growth-wise? What's the thought on that?
There's a lot of need growth-wise, but, you know, I'll, I'll continue to have those discussions with our staff. You know, being a fiscal conservative, you know, I, I really am gonna take a look, hard look at the budget and see what we can do.
Impact fees, you hear a lot about those. Personally, as somebody who lives in the southern end of the county, I think they've worked for the northern end of the county rather well. We've not had a lot of growth in the southern end of the county. I think our time's kind of coming, but also a lot of the growth was, you know, the, the people moved into the northern part of the county in the north central. So you've seen those impact fees used for roads and parks and, and, and things up there. How are we looking impact fee-wise, and we still have money to be able to, to spend in the different, because it's, wherever it's collected, the money's spent. Which is why the southern end has not seen, I mean, we haven't had a new park in the southern end of the county since Asiola, oh, Treaty Park, I'm sorry, Treaty Park, so yes.
Yeah, you know, Mike, I was talking with our Parks and Rec Director just the other day, and, and we were just kind of chatting about how, you know, in the last 10 years, our county has grown by 100,000 people. That means in the last 10 years, we basically grew by a city, and we haven't built a park.
Yep.
And we've got 20,000 registered boats, but we only have 580 boat parking spots. And our beaches are full, and people are parking along A1A, we need more beach parking, which we're, we're, we're working on.
Yep.
So I, I have to go back and look at the exact number of the, of, but I know we have some in, in, in reserves for, you know, potentially for parks. I know we are using some of it for acquiring some property for beach parking there in Crescent, in Crescent Beach, you know, where the old South Beach Grill was. That's becoming, that's being taken down, and that's going to be an additional parking. And then right across the street, there's a lot over there, and we're looking at acquiring that to add some more beach parking. We've just had so many complaints from residents down there, you know?
Well, it used to be, if you got that far, you, you always got off at that ramp, you didn't go on the ramp, right? But now, I would imagine with all of the growth that's gone on, you're seeing more people push down, and, you know, you look at, I mean, I used to run on the beach in the, in the 90s at night, and you could run on the beach in the middle of the summer, and there'd be hardly anybody out there. You go out there now in the evenings, and there's hundreds and hundreds of people walking on that beach, using that beach, they're tourists, they're locals, they're riding their bikes on it, depending on the tide, which I, you know, I'm, I'm happy with all of that, but it's just a radical change from what it was 30 years ago.
Right, yeah. Our beaches, you know, that's one of our biggest attractions, you know, we're, we're a tourism town, and, you know, all you have to do is go out on the Fourth of July weekend and look at our beaches.
You don't have to go to the Fourth of July anymore. Anytime you, the, the weather's nice, you'll be shocked how many people are, I am, because it used to not be that way. You'd see it on the, on the heavy busy weekends.
And you're a big surfer, right?
Big surfer. I'm out there all the time and so I, I get to see that and, you know, I, I don't. I'm blessed because I know people that live over there, so I have lots of parking places. So parking's not an issue for me. I have friends, right? And the friends places that I park usually have showers, which is even a better part at the end of surfing. But, you know, if you're somebody coming here for the day, you gotta find a place to park, you gotta find a place to get to the beach. It's, it's, yes, it is a big deal and there's not a lot of parking over there.
There's not. Um, we did have one other spot down there in Crescent Beach, um, that was gonna be beach parking. Um, it was Tortuga. And, you know, I met with, um, some of the surrounding residents in those condos and they were really. You know, really concerned about the traffic there on A1A and, and, uh, you know, some of the issues that they've had over there. And so we had, we had, you know, kind of taken that off the table. Um, but yeah, we continue to look for, for beach parking. More parks, uh, more green space. Um, just conservation in general, you know, we upped the AMP. Uh, funding from five hundred thousand to two million. So we're, we're constantly looking for, for more green space.
Uh, you did, the, the county did unload part of the Parks and Rec Department. The AMP now is run by a nonprofit.
That is correct.
So how did that, how did those negotiations go and what do you expect to see out of the AMP?
Well, I'll tell you, I've, I've met with those guys and, and you, you, you know some of them for, for a very long time. And I think this was a, was a great move. Um, you know, I, I, I think that they will have a lot of success. Um, the folks that I, like I said, I met with Jerry West and the, the, the team. Um, I, I did some tours early on of the, of the amphitheater and also the Ponte Vedra Concert Hall. And yeah, those, those folks really know what they're doing and they've got a good, good team and I, I expect nothing but success out of that. Um, I wasn't able to make the, uh, Sing Out Loud event that they, that they had all had, but, um, yeah, I have no doubt they'll, they'll have a lot of success with this.
Yeah, I'm hoping that group does a really, really good job and I'm saying that and I live near there, right? So, yeah, I, when I see the schedule, I'm like, Gabe, no, no, I mean, it, it's, you know, it doesn't matter where you live in St. John's County. You put up with a little bit of stuff, right? I mean, people that are in northern part are like, hey, we moved here and there's, there's, you know, kind of roads and traffic and construction, those things, yeah. If you live in the southern part, we deal with nights of lights, we deal with the, the fireworks, we deal with what we're gonna deal with the, the bridge we talked about earlier, going over King Street. And if you live near the amphitheater, you, you deal with the amphitheater traffic, right?
It just bring concerts all the time. In your backyard.
It depends which way the wind's blowing.
Yeah.
It really does. And if it's a Bob Dylan concert, you really don't want to be outside when the wind's blowing because you may pass your, uh, random drug test the next day.
Might fail.
You might not make it.
Yep.
Have you guys been out to any of the concerts out there or any, seen any of the shows? Have you guys had a chance to?
I haven't, uh, I haven't in a while. The last one I saw was Kevin Costner.
Okay. They get some really good talent in there. I mean, they really do.
Uh, the last one I went to was Night Ranger and Brett Michaels. And I gotta tell you, Brett Michaels, uh, did a phenomenal job. I was really, really impressed with him. Cause, you know, he doesn't have twenty albums to draw from, but he, he was a showman. He put on a really good show. Uh, you could tell he was having a lot of fun doing that. And yeah, it was really, it was really, uh, really a fun show.
That's great.
Yeah. But I think I've, I've seen, I've seen Brothers Osborne there, uh, Zach, Zach Brown was there, uh, when they were hitting it big. Um, there's been a lot of great concerts that have rolled through there.
They really have. I've gone to a couple and they do a really good job.
Yes.
It was kind of cool that, you know, they kind of took me backstage and showed me a lot of the, you know, where the bands meet and. It was just really interesting, you know, to kind of go through all that.
Was a great idea to give a new lease to an old property, right? The Cross and Sword, uh, had run its course, the, the venue was being run down. It's a great way to do that. And I do think having county control over it was better than giving it to an out-of-town group. That real, I mean, and that's one of the hard things, watching all of this growth, you see more and more larger corporations coming in here. And a lot of them don't have a tie to the community. And then, and to me, that's a harder thing to watch because you want people that, that want what's best for our community. And not just what's best for them as a business entity.
Right.
Yeah. I, that's, that's real hard. Um, one of the projects that is a bit controversial that, um, is, is working its way through the process. Or somewhere in the process, um, affordable housing, uh, a project between Wildwood Drive and Watson Road. Um, I can't remember the name, but Asiola.
It's Asiola. I can't remember that. But yeah, they were looking at six hundred and forty homes. Obviously, they were adding a workforce housing component to that, which is, you know, according to our county, you know, is thirty percent of that. At a price of two hundred and sixty thousand offered for two years. Um, the project has been pulled. Um, and we did, we had a, a community meeting a few weeks back. Very contentious there at the Classic Car Museum in St. Augustine and, um, you know, folks really expressed a lot of the, the issues. We talked about, you know, traffic and drainage and just overall, you know, compatibility, those were some of the issues that they addressed. And, or, you know, voiced their concerns on and, um, so, you know, that project was pulled. Um, and, you know, I, like I tell everybody, you know, with these quasi judicial projects, you know, I don't, I can't give an answer until I hear. All the facts, all the testimony. Um, but I just tell them, you know, I judge every project based on its, on its merit. And if it's not compatible, I don't, uh, I don't support it. And I will tell you, since my time being on the board, we have denied quite a bit. Uh, and just in the, in the southern part of the county, when you look at, uh, Belatera and Porte de Sol and Mivo. Um, so, you know, if it's, if it's not compatible, um, I don't, uh, I don't.
Yeah, I, I, I've been involved with the Home Builders and, and I really, I, I love that group. I think they do a great job. Um, the Home Builders back Paul Waldron years ago when he was running, God rest his soul, when he, just a great commissioner. Just a wonderful person, right? And, um, within two or three weeks of him being elected, he had denied. One of the Home Builders requests and, and the guy came back to our group and said, you guys told me he was a good, he turned me down. And we're like, well, did you go talk to him? Did you go do this? Did you go do that? Did you go? But it's like, Paul had the best interest of the community in mind. And yeah, sometimes you would have something, so it's not ready to, to be developed yet. Or the, the roads aren't there, the infrastructure's not there and, you know, I, sometimes that's a tough call. Cause you've got somebody trying to, to use their property and develop it, but at other times you've got to look at what, how that impact is on the rest of the community. Um, there were people involved in growth in the early, late eighties. We'll tell you, some of the developers that came in just scalped St. John's County. I mean, they just, St. John's County wasn't used to any kind of growth and the county was like, yeah, we'll do that and yeah, we'll do this and yeah, we'll do that. They never do those things now.
Right.
Ever.
Right. Yeah. And I, I think also, you know, this is, this is our time to, like I said. Let the developers know upfront, you know, this is what we, what we, what we need, you know, infrastructure-wise. Put in turn lane, put in the traffic signal. Um, the, cause the infrastructure's just really gotta be there. But I do want to touch base on, um, I, I know that, that was one project, but we have added, um, over three hundred units. In the last year with regards to, um, affordable housing. You know, this is a very, um. It's a very sensitive topic because you have a lot of the residents that are upset about the growth. And they look at, you know, workforce housing as just multifamily, more cars, more traffic.
Yeah.
Um, I think that we have to be really smart about it. Um, I think the comp plan that we're gonna be doing can address some of the, 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 the questions. And, you know, we have to find a place for our teachers, our policemen, our firemen. You know, our tourism industry here is the, um, is, is very important. We gotta, you know, folks have to be able to afford to live where they, where they work. And the average home here is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, if you're not making a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, that's what you need to make to be able to afford that home price. So look, we're gonna be getting to a point where, um, you know, we've really got to figure something out.
Well, there, there's a huge pay gap. This is also a retirement community. So you have people that are retiring down here that have the ability to afford those houses. They've sold a house somewhere else.
Right.
If you're a younger person growing up in here trying to get that first home, that is an incredibly difficult number if you're under thirty years old. If you're a working family trying to find someplace that's under two thousand dollars a month for rent is incredibly difficult to do. The Airbnb explosion has exacerbated the workforce housing problem. Cause you have a lot of these properties downtown that used to be workforce housing that are now an Airbnb. And you've taken those completely offline for people that would, could live downtown, work downtown, ride a bike to work. Um, work in the service industry, work in the, the hospitality industry. And now they're having to drive.
Right.
And find parking. And so it's just.
And that adds to the traffic congestion, you know, people are, you know, they're, they're, they're upset with the symptoms of growth. The traffic, but when you have people that have to live outside the county and then they're on the interstate and. I mean, we've all seen what the interstate has been like lately, you know, with the traffic. So, um, this is a big issue. And I'll tell you, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, and NEPA, which I know you're a part of, you know, those organizations. I think, uh, the chamber now has a, like an attainable housing council. Um, and they're, they're really working this hard, you know, there's companies like, you know, I've spoken with folks, Grumman. Um, very concerned about this, very concerned. I mean, I think he mentioned, uh, you know, one in the, uh, Orville. Don't, I don't know if, you know, I think he mentioned like sixty percent of Grumman employees don't live here. So.
Now, well, if, if you wanna see, uh, go down on US one south, park at Smoke and D's in the morning. And watch all the traffic coming up out of Palm Coast that are people that live in Palm Coast that are working in St. John's County. And then go out on two oh seven, sit at where the, the movie theater is, right? And watch all that traffic coming in on two oh seven. When I was a kid, two oh seven was a two-lane road that was not heavily utilized, right? And then it became four-lane. You're like, boy, they four-lane that for no reason at all. Now you look at it and thought, well, when's the sixth lane coming, right? When's two more lanes? Because it's just the volume of traffic. That now travels between Palacca and St. Augustine on that road. Cause you can, you can buy a, a more affordable house in the Palacca area than you can here. But then you're outside St. John's County School District, right? You're in a, you, you're moving to an area that's more affordable. But, you know, if St. John's County is number one in things, Putnam County is usually towards the bottom of that same list.
Yeah.
They're not close. You have a question?
I, I don't really have a question other than, um, so you're a young man, you've got a family. Um, what made you, uh, decide now is the time to run for office?
Well, I would say that for me, um, I've been given an opportunity. Um, I was appointed by the governor and so I've, I've got a year under my belt. I've learned a lot. I've gained a lot of experience. We've got, um, some serious challenges in our county. Um, but I feel like I have solutions to those challenges and, um, feel like my experience in, in government. And in the private sector, um, make me the most experienced for this, for this position moving forward. Um, and I also feel like, um, you know, like I said in the beginning, I, I just have had a passion for public service. And wanna continue serving in this, in this role. So.
How do you balance the, the, you have, you have a regular job, you have a public service job and then you have family. So how are you balancing all of that?
It is very challenging. There's no doubt about that. Um, I can just say, Mike, that, you know, I'm very blessed. My wife, my best friend, uh, has really stepped up with the business. Um, I own the business with my brother-in-law. Um, but my wife has, um, she's a substitute teacher now. She was a full-time teacher here, but she's a substitute teacher now. And she's working the business as an office, like our office manager. She's running it basically, essentially. So. I'm very blessed that I have the, the support, uh, necessary to be able to go out and, and serve. But, um, yeah, that's, you know, just having the support around me. And it's, uh, it is a challenge, but I make time for it.
So what priorities, if you're elected, what are some of the priorities that you've got?
Well, I want to continue to, um, fix, fix the, uh, traffic, you know, work on road improvement. Um, continue to apply my, uh, smart controlled growth principles of, um, you know, compatibility. Uh, I do want to continue to, to work on, you know, Commissioner Waldron was very big on, um, in the parks, the green space. He was very, uh, instrumental in acquiring the Genovar property and also the, the, um, Police Athletic League. We just got that sports complex. He was very, you know, influential in that. So I'd like to see us continue to work on getting some more green space. I've got two young kids. Uh, fourteen-year-old and a, and a ten-year-old. So, you know, continue to work on that and, and continue to, um, you know, serve the public. Be a voice. This is my county. This is where I, where I grew up. Uh, this is where I'm raising my family. So, um.
What, what do you see as the, the most important infrastructure project? I mean, what, what region of the county do you look at and say, the, or multiple regions, you go, these areas need some help with traffic congestion? Where, where do you see kind of the worst places right now?
Uh, um, well, the big one that we have that we're, we're tackling right now is the, um, County Road two ten. Um, you know, we're, we're moving forward. You probably saw that. We're, we're going forward with the widening and we're confident that the, uh, the developers.
I thought you should narrow it. I really did. I mean, going from six lanes down to one, you just narrow that down.
I mean, that's a choice. It's a.
Gosh, I know. That section of road, what was the holdup in widening that section of road?
Well, you know, we, uh, and this is part of our theme of, of holding the developers accountable. We did that with, with, um, the other Grand Oaks down there on sixteen, you know, they had committed. I think that, you know, when you, when you, these things start to move forward, you know, it, it's, they, they have a number of what it would cost to widen it. Well, guess what? Years down the road, what happens, Mike?
Well, costs have gone up dramatically since twenty nineteen.
So it's, it's forty million dollars, I've been told to manage a, a mile of road.
Good gracious.
So.
We're in the wrong business.
I mean, just write the check. I got it right here.
Yeah, it is, uh, road construction, construction as a whole has gone through the roof since twenty nineteen. It, it, it's amazing what the numbers are right now.
Oh, it's off the, it's off the charts. So that, that, that whole area, I do think World Golf Village, uh, State Road sixteen is our number one priority. I know we've been talking to the legislature, um, and you've been out that way quite a bit, Amanda. I mean, it's, it's a parking lot, you know, between the, the, like I said, the, the high school there and, um, Buc-E's Costco.
Well, I was, my primary concern was more southern on State Road sixteen, just right up here where you get on ninety-five. Just so you can get to World Golf Village. I mean, that is a nightmare. People are so close to getting hit all the time. It, it doesn't feel like the lanes, I know they have to shift them so they can work on them, but it doesn't feel like those lanes are where they should be. They're a little too narrow.
We're, we're continuing to work with the legislature and FDOT and, and, and work on, uh, State Road sixteen. Because it's probably the biggest traffic area congestion we have in the county. And so, um, you know, we're, like I said, we're holding the developer county accountable. They were on record saying that, you know, they were going to widen that road no matter the cost. Um, and so, you know, we had to take action there, um, you know, put them in default with the county. Um, but we're gonna continue, like I said, holding, holding developers accountable. I think that, you know, getting these stuff done up front is, is really important.
Uh, Bobby wants to know Silverleaf and all the other developments along State Road sixteen being held responsible for State Road sixteen yet.
I mean, if you look at, uh, like when you look at Silverleaf and I wasn't on the board, but, um, you know, they, they put in the roads. You know, they, they put in the, the infrastructure up front. Um, you know, you have communities that, like I said, you know, you have these developers, I think, that live here. They work here, um, they're in the community and they're putting these things in ahead of time. And so twenty-two oh nine, I think is going to be a big, a big help.
I rode that, uh, this, like a, this past summer and there's sections you went through and you're just like, I can see development there. I can see development. You just knew it's coming. It's not there yet. And, and then all of a sudden you get to a place and you hang a right and you go, yep, here's the development now. I've caught up to this and I'm on State Road sixteen. It's a very interesting road. Um, three thirteen, I think is another interesting road when it gets built because it is gonna change an awful lot as well in the southern end of the county. Cause that'll pick up at two oh seven and then run all the way around to the airport. And it's done on the airport end of it. I mean, the roads there, it's just, are three twelve. I've always, can't remember if they were gonna call it three thirteen or three twelve, but yeah. Yeah, that, that's gonna be an interesting, it's gonna open up a lot of property for development, both commercial and residential.
Yeah. And that's, uh, you know, we hear that quite a bit. Um, you know, like I said, the main, the main concern that I hear on a daily basis with the residents is the, is the growth. Um, they're, they're, they're upset about the traffic, you know, the people coming in. Um, and, you know, there's, they're waiting in line longer at the grocery store, drainage, you know, they have all of these. You know, that, that's what I hear the most of. And I just try to, you know, assure people that, you know, I support smart controlled growth. Uh, wanna make sure that if, you know, the project is compatible. If it's not, you know, I typically, you know, like I said, I, I've been on. On record denying a lot of projects that I felt like weren't compatible. So, um, and I'm, I'm upfront, you know, with folks. I mean, obviously a lot of these projects are quasi judicial, so you can't, you know, state your position. But I tell everybody, I judge each project based on its merit and.
We have a follow-up from Bobby.
Yes.
So Bobby mentioned, um, you spoke to the roads inside of Silverleaf. So the infrastructure within the community itself, but I think Bobby was speaking to, um, State Road sixteen. Outside.
The two-lane portion.
Yeah, the two-lane portion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that we were continuing to, it's at the top of our, uh, priority list. Uh, for, for, for road, road improvements in, in the county. So, um, we're meeting with the legislature, we're meeting with FDOT. Um, it's a, it's a, definitely a priority for us, for sure.
Um, I do want to give you guys kudos. I thought the board did a really good job in picking a new county administrator. Uh, Joy Andrews is great. I think she's done a really, really good job working for the county for a long time. So I think you guys did a great job there.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. It, I, she's, she's phenomenal. She's done a great job. Um, I've been impressed with her since she, you know, since I met her.
Yeah.
Um, and I've known her a long time, um, even going back to my time on the planning and zoning board. But I think, uh, yeah, she's very smart, very qualified, you, very accessible, very professional. You can ask her questions. She's been on, I believe, some of these shows. I think she was on nine oh four now. I think she was on 904 Now.
They have a 904 Now morning show? Are you sure? Are you positive?
I don't know.
Yes, she was. I came down here to make sure she was okay. Or she's, I just wanted to make sure she survived. No. Uh, Pete and those guys do a phenomenal job in the morning on their show. We give them a hard time all the time, but it's the only news show you will get in St. John's County.
They were giving us a hard time this morning.
Good for them.
They were lagging and they were blaming us.
Not our fault that you guys can't keep up.
Not our fault.
All right, the stuff runs great for us.
I know, we have no problems.
Remember to unplug that thing when we leave.
Yeah, no problem.
Yep, don't tell them what it is, we just unplug it again. They'll figure it out sooner or later. Clay's a genius.
Yep.
Yes. No, so I, I, I think you guys did a really good job in, in, in getting someone that knew the community, had worked in the community for a long time. And I agree with you, she's very accessible, she's easy to talk to. Um, she's very patient. If you've got an issue going on, she's not dismissive. Um, and I, and I think that's, you know, kind of key for somebody working in that public service or public sector.
Yeah, we had a lot of great candidates, uh, apply. Um, but I, I felt like, you know, move, day one, she was really the most prepared for this position.
Mm hmm.
And she's, she's exceeded every expectation I could have imagined. She's, works very hard. Um, she'll, she'll, I mean, she's up all hours of the night.
Mm hmm.
Doing, you know, working on things and, and so she's super smart, very, very helpful. Been very, very great asset to the county.
Right, your primaries in August.
Yes, sir.
Right, August the?
20th.
20th, August 20th. Um, and if somebody wants to get ahold of you or your campaign, how do they get ahold of you or your campaign?
Uh, they can go on our website, uh, which is royalaimo.com. That's R O Y A L A I M O dot com. And they can, they can reach out to me that way. Um, and like I said, I'll be happy to give out my number or my, my email. So my number's 904-806-5863. Um, I, I use a Gmail account, which is royalaimo83@gmail.com. Uh, that is my personal information. So, um, but yeah, no, please, please reach out to me, uh, any questions that you have and, and any concerns.
And why I tell you, I, I hear people all the time, I can't get ahold of these people and I don't know who they are and they're running. When there's a campaign going on, these candidates will meet with you pretty much anytime. If you'll just call them and set up a time. And if you've got a group of people or a neighborhood that wants to meet, now's the time to, to reach out, tell the candidates we'd like to talk to, like to tell you what's important to our neighborhood. They're gonna listen and they want your support and they want to earn your support. So reach out to all of them and talk to them, right now's the time to do it.
Absolutely. And, um, that's, you know, I've been going around the county.
Mm hmm.
Um, I, I talk with people all the time and, and try to find out what their, what their concerns are and, you know, how I can best help and, and assist. And, um, cause I, I, like I said, that's the most important part of my job is listening to the people that I represent. I think that's really what it's all about.
Mm hmm.
I'm the liaison between county government and the people.
Well, and then if somebody has a problem, you know, a lot of times you're calling the commissioner. And sometimes it's a little thing that's easy to fix and sometimes it's something that's much more difficult, so.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt.
And we just want to know you guys are there in case we can't get ahold of staff for some reason. And staff is usually really good. I, I deal with a lot of the staff in different departments, um, in, in my role as a builder. And, and almost all of them are very responsive occasionally running into somebody who isn't, but it's, it's a rare occasion. But it's nice to know that if you have an issue, you can reach out to somebody who's an elected official, who's going to be your advocate and help you get your situation resolved.
Sure, sure.